I kind of want to sit on the floor. It's like that.
Oh, you're here.
We'll call the meeting order at 6:30. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardenas.
Present.
Commissioner Sue.
Present.
Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Here.
And Chair Chelf is absent.
Right.
Would like to leave some Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just have.
You need approval of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Blue folder items, I see we have one here, correct?
You do have one for item 10B. See if they file.
I'll make a motion to receive and file item 10B.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none. Consent calendar.
7A.
Approve affidavit posting for Planning Commission. B, approve minutes for the April 15 Planning Commission meetings. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting notes.
An I second.
7A and 7B.
An I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. No excluded consent calendar items. Okay, on to public hearings. No public hearings continued from previous meeting. So our new public hearings, 10A. Can I get a description, please?
Chair, Vice Chair Kirkpatrick, this evening. Assistant Planner Stephanie will be addressing 10A zoning case number 24-154. Site plan review for non-exempt grading and walls to exceed a height of three feet and two and a half feet of average, up to a maximum height of five feet, and conditional use permit to exceed 200 square feet for the accessory structure and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for the location at 16 Caballeros Road, Rolling Hills, California, 902, which is a UN wing, lot 6-K. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Good evening, Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners. I am here to present 16 Caballeros Road. It's for zoning case number 24-015. The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit and site plan review. The subject property is located on Caballeros Road and it is zoned RES1. As you can see, it's more located on the southern portion of the city, the west side of the city. This is a vicinity map. My apologies, when I loaded the pictures onto my PowerPoint, it's a little bit grainy and blurry, so just bear with me. Right here, this is, oh, yeah, thank you for dimming the lights. Hopefully that helps out a little bit. So the new pergola is right here, and it's proposed to be about 70 feet and 10 inches away from the adjacent neighbors, which is 14 Caballeros. So the adjacent neighbor to the south is 14 Caballeros, and the pergola, this is the dotted dash line, is the pergola, and it's 70 feet and 10 inches away from the adjacent house residence next door. And the new pergola is located far enough away from any adjacent structures, and it doesn't obstruct any of the views from any of the adjacent neighbors. A little bit of background, like I said, the zoning for this property is RES1. The net lot area is 63,074 square feet. It is 1.44 acres. Building pad one, which is the residential building pad, is 8,307 square feet. Building pad two, which is currently undeveloped, and it is 4,255 square feet. The existing 4,000, there's an existing single-family residence that was built in 1956. It's 4,207 square feet. There is a 6,600 square foot garage. It's attached, and 170 square foot service yard. So on December 2nd, the applicant applied for site plan review for non-exempt grading and for the walls to exceed the three feet maximum height. So there's 54 cubic yards of cut for the walls. It's part of the non-exempt grading. That's part of the northeastern corner of the pool deck. And then there's 54 cubic yards of fill at the south corner of the pool deck. The walls at the northeastern corner will exceed the three feet. And also, there's a five-foot-high cut at the bottom of the stairs. On December 2nd, the applicant also applied for a conditional use permit for a 636-square-foot detached structure. It's the pergola. Also part of this project, there's a ministerial application. There are other proposed developments that will be approved by staff and ministerially approved. There is a 480-square-foot swimming pool spa, which is 12 feet wide by 38 feet in length. There's also a 155-square-foot stairway that extends from the first building pad down to the recreational building pad. There is also a 42-square-foot outdoor kitchen that's located under the pergola. 16-square-foot pool equipment that is located in the northeastern corner of the pool deck. There's three-feet-high planters, three-feet-high retaining walls, 2,476-square-foot pool deck, which is less than 12 inches. There's 93 cubic yards of cut for the swimming pool, which is exempt and will be exported. There's also 536 cubic yard, 536 square feet landscape that will be in the planters. This is grading. So once again, my apologies that it's very kind of faint. This section right here is the grading. This is the cut. This is 54 cubic yards of cut. This is where, this section right here is where the retaining walls will exceed by three, by six inches. So the max height of these retaining walls here in this section will be three feet, six inches. This is all, this will all be filled, and it's less than three feet for the fill. So it's hard to tell, but there's some retaining walls here, this area that's bubbled. Here's the bottom of the staircase. That cut will be at five feet. And then these retaining walls, maximum height is three feet, six inches. This red, highlighted in red area is the proposed pergola, and it's not in, it's out of all of the setbacks. So this is the 20-foot setback right here, and so it's not in any of the setbacks. The first building pad is the residential building pad. This area right here, that's the residential building pad. And the second building pad is undeveloped and relatively flat. It's located about 35 feet below the first building pad. There is an existing four-foot-high wall. It's kind of, it's about 125 feet, you know, in total length. So the wall, there's an existing wall here, and there's this fence right here, and there's some trees right here. So the red area is where the building pad is. This area is relatively flat. This section, there's going to be the pool deck here, and then the upper portion will be the set of site area. And the set of site area is accessible from the side, so they have access to, you know, the thousand-square-foot set of site area. The other portion will be the recreational building pad. So the swimming pool will go here, and then the cabana will be located here. All this will be removed, the fence, some of these trees, and then also that retaining wall. Here is, I don't know if it's hard to see, but as you can see, this is the pergola. 10 feet high, 10 feet high, six inches. That's the max height. And it is 636 square feet. The project complies with all of the development standards in the Rolling Hills Municipal Code. The development table, it's well below, you know, the 20% structural coverage, 10.3 flat work, 11.11%. So everything with, with the exception of the building pad coverage. And the reason why the building pad coverages are high is because building pad one, it does encroach, half of the house is, encroaches into the front setback. The building pad two, it's 4,255 square feet. All of the structures are 1,054, so it exceeds by, you know, 5.3, and that's just the guideline. So community communication, the project was noticed in the Daily Breeze on May 10th, and the neighbors within a thousand-foot radius were sent, were mailed out notices on May 9th. The project is, has been determined to be categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA Section 15303, Class 3, which is new construction of single-family residence and accessory structures. We did have project concerns. That was from the neighbor at 14 Caballeros. That was the neighbor that's just to the south, that's adjacent. She received, we received a phone call from her on May 13th, and she came in on May 15th to look at the plans. And then this morning, she also attended the field trip meeting. She did express her concerns with the project impacting her views. She's not, did you hear you're here? I didn't see her come in, and I don't think she's here now. But she called staff a couple times, and she, she also called to get the link to the plans. They were on the agenda, but for some reason, she wasn't able to access them. And then she was able to show her husband the plans, and that was the last that I'd heard from her. So our recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and then close the public hearing. You can discuss, discuss the proposed project. And Resolution 2025-06 is provided for your consideration if you decide to adopt. If there's any questions, staff is here to answer any questions, along with the architect, Domingo Atelia.
Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Good to go? Okay, at this time, we'll open the hearing up to the public. Please state your name and address if you'd like to come up.
My name is Domingo Atelia, address. Sitting down.
See the little mic there? That way we record you.
Domingo Atelia, address 5533 Bay Ridge Road, Ranch of Palos Verdes, California 90275. First and foremost, good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration. I met you all this morning at the site, and I believe that you looked at the plans, you reviewed them, so I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of the owner as well.
Self-explanatory.
Wonderful.
Good description this morning. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Commissioners, let's discuss this real quick. Hopefully quick.
It's pretty self-explanatory. I don't, it looks like a good project that was well-planned and an enhancement to the property. No problems with it.
I don't either, but pergola was covered by screening, and neighbors were okay with it, so I'm fine.
I think also the six inches that exceeded was just that portion of the wall, and that's all I was concerned about. But it is behind the pool, and not really a way to landscape that, so I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Do we have a draft? Do we have a?
Excuse me in the public, we got to keep it quiet, so thank you.
Do we have a draft resolution yet or no? We do?
We do.
Okay.
Just having a point of clarification. The title of the staff, sorry, the attachment in the staff report recognizes it as 2025-05, and on the actual agenda, it indicates 2025-06. So we will get point of clarification on if it's five or six. But yes, the attached resolution is there for your review and consideration.
And is the attached resolution 05 or 06?
That's what he's.
In the, in the agenda packet, it's, it's 05, so if the motion was to approve the agenda in your packet for this project, I think we'd have what we need from the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve 2025-05.
Thank you.
For second?
Thank you. And roll call. Wait a second for that.
I can do the roll call. Commissioner Cardenas.
Approved.
Commissioner Sue.
Approved.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you. Our next 10B zoning case 24-043.
Again, a thank you, Vice Chair, Commissioner, and Commissioners, on the item before you, 10B zoning case number 24-043, site plan review for construction of new residence, non-exempt grading, stable access, walls exceeding a height of three feet and two and a half feet average, up to a maximum feet of five feet, and other improvements, conditional use permits for a detached accessory structure greater than 200 square feet, stable greater than 200 square feet, and variances for construction in the front yard, site disturbance of more than 40%, and fill slopes steeper than 2:1, and finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act for the location at 6 Chuck Wagon Road, Rolling Hills, California 90274, lot 29-A-EF Lee Residence. And this item before you will be presented by Ms. Reyna. Reyna joins us from Willdan. She has taken over the project from the previous Willdan planner, Lisa, who is no longer with the agency and with the City of Rolling Hills as a contract employee. So without further ado, I will go ahead and I will pass the item along to Ms. Reyna for presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The item you have before you tonight is for zoning case 24-043 for Chuck Wagon. The three main considerations you're, thank you. The three main considerations, again, as we talked about in the field trip this morning, are the variances, the conditional use permits, and the site plan review that we'll be getting into shortly. The project is located in the RES1 zone, and the nearest intersection are Chuck Wagon Road and East Feld, which we entered to the south this morning. The radius map shows a thousand-foot radius that were, that were notified of the field trip. Property owners were notified of the field trip, and public hearing notices were sent by mail and published in the local newspaper twice on April 14, or 15th, and again for the May 20th meeting today. The frontage of the property runs along Chuck Wagon. It's, it's a corner lot, and the southern side has a 50-foot, has a 50-foot-wide road easement that runs along the entire property. As stated earlier, the applications before you tonight are site plan review for construction of a new residence, which totals 6939 square feet with a 2,877-square-foot basement. There will be stable access to the northern portion of Chuck Wagon, and the site plan review covers walls in excess of three feet. The conditional use permit applications you have before you are for detached accessory structure over 200 square feet, which is the lanai. If you recall, it's an open four-post lanai with a solid roof cover on the northern portion of the property, and a stable over 200 square feet. And finally, the three variances. Construction in the front yard, which is where the corral was placed so that it wouldn't be on the southern side of the property closer to the neighbors, as well as site disturbance over 40%. And I italicized the last one because that's why the last, we pulled this item from the last Planning Commission meeting on April 15th, because it wasn't properly noticed for fill, fill slopes steeper than 2:1 upon visiting the property on April 15th in the morning. A little bit of background, again, property's in RES1 zone. The net lot area is 72,508 feet, approximately 1.66 acres. There's a building pad, the building pad is 19,200 square feet, and there is an existing house that we all saw this morning at 3,086 square feet and a 400-square-foot garage attached that will be demolished. April 15th, this item was originally scheduled for the Planning Commission to hear, and the, the morning field trip on April 15th, we took, we took a sign-in sheet, and the residents and public that came to the field trip were listed up there with their addresses as listed on the sign-in sheet. And then we noticed, the staff noticed this steep slope and went back to the office, looked at the plans, and talked to the architect, and decided to pull the item from the Planning Commission meeting because it wasn't properly noticed, fill slope 2:1 that I had italicized in the previous slide. So we re-noticed it for today's meeting, and we told the applicant as such, applicant architect, and he was receptive to the comments and concerns of the neighbors. We reiterated what, what I'll go into in the presentation of the neighbors. We told him what the concerns were, views, steepness, steep slope, and however, the applicant requested to proceed with the application as is, plans as is. And that's why we're here tonight on May 20th to hear the item. These were the summation of, of the public comments. They are attachments seven through nine, 7, 8, 9, in your staff report. We received letters from several neighbors, as well as representative of neighbors, and there are seven, eight, nine, summation up here. Basically, the property to the south at 4 Chuck Wagon had concerns about the garage being too close to the property and asked that it be shifted 35 feet west. Worried about the headlights and potential privacy issues looking into the neighborhood to, into their bedroom and bathroom to the south, or to the east. And then, of course, the proximity of the garage to the property line. We also received an email from the resident at 2 Chuck Wagon that was concerned about the stable location, and that's part, that's, that's one of your attachments. And next, we, at the field trip on April 15th, the resident of 31 East Feld asked for a summation of all the homes, particularly neighboring in the vicinity of the property, particularly those neighboring 6 Chuck Wagon, as well as any property that, or any house that has been built within the last few years of the city, and what's the size in relation to the basement and garage size. Staff started that chart, and that was in your blue item folder tonight, but it's a work in progress, and we still have some work to do. So it, it shows you an analysis of neighbors, of neighbors in, of the neighborhood properties, as well as properties or houses that the city has approved, the size and scope of them within the last few years. And then finally, one of your attachments was from the Rolling Hills Community Association about their, their concerns about the project, including the biofiltration structure needing to be relocated, as well as the retaining walls in their, in their easements. So fast forward a month to today's field trip. The architect and the engineer were able to, were able to come to the meeting today. They were not present at the April 15th meeting. So they received the comments from the neighbors, and again, the list of neighbors that made it to this morning, or public is before you. I'll take you to the site plan, which we all saw at the field trip. This right here is the lanai that requires the conditional use permit because it's over, over 200-square-foot detached structure, it's 650. The future stable and corral there in the front yard setback requires the variance, wraparound porch, main house, the six-car garage is located right here, and this is actually the rear of the property, so Chuck Wagon is right here. So the, the three variances and conditional use permit and site plan review for grading walls, retaining walls throughout over three feet. I'm sorry, I take you back. The outline of the house, the existing structure, I think it's right here. It's shown in the floor plan. The existing structure that we saw today, existing garage, existing main line of the house, here's the lanai, the floor plan, and here's a six-car garage. The 6,900-square-foot house is, here's the floor plan, bedrooms on the first floor, living room, master bedroom to capture the full view of Chuck Wagon, as well as the basement is below the living room area, and we'll get to that the next. The basement is basically a, an entertainment room with, for TV viewing and entertainment room. Back to the development table. This is the development table, just explaining that it meets most of, as proposed, the property improvements will be within the maximum coverages, grading quantities, and still be able, still be able to provide the set of site areas. It's within, it meets all the development setbacks. Only relief the applicant is seeking is to allow 3,000 cubic yards more of land disturbance, right here, 3,000 cubic yards more of land disturbance than already existing, which means about 77%. So the floor plan. The elevations, Mediterranean-style wrought iron windows. This is the east elevation, which is the garage. This is the garage wall that is facing 4 Chuck Wagon that had comments, no windows to protect privacy. The entrance, side entrance, main entrance, if you will, to the house, and this is setback, but this is the garage on the east side. And then this is the west elevation, which is the master bedroom where, to capture the best views. The north elevation running along Chuck Wagon, the longest elevation of the house. It's, it's flipped, so the garage is now here, the three-car, rather, six-car garage with three doors. So one door, two door, three door, and then the house with master bedroom over here. Cross-section demonstrating the fill, and they're getting most of the fill from the basement to create the driveway. The fill is taking up most of the driveway. And then the house located there. Some aerial pictures of the property. Chuck, six Chuck Wagons right here. We all trekked up this driveway slope today, this morning, and, and saw the plans right here. Garage will go right here. 4 Chuck Wagon is right here. 2 Chuck Wagon is to the south a little bit, and then this is 8 Hackamore, address up the hill. So then this is going south along Chuck Wagon driveway, 4 Chuck Wagon and 2 Chuck Wagon. Further south to get a view of 6 Chuck Wagon, this is where the basement will go, garage, and then the driveway will meander up to the garage. And finally, to the south, East Feld Street down here. And this is categorically exempt under CEQA 15303, and staff recommends that the Planning Commission open the public hearing, take the public testimony, close the public hearing, and discuss the proposed project, as well as direct staff with, direct staff with what, how to proceed, including, we did draft a resolution if you're so inclined. And then finally, I wanted to inform you that that chart is also up here, so we could show it to the public. The comparison is also up here, as well as some pictures that were taken on site at the April 15th field trip.
Thank you.
That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. One comment on the blue folder item. Usually I'd like to see, I don't know about you guys, but it's tough when we're just comparing, and you don't know the lot square footage or the building pad. Sometimes we have one-acre parcels and the whole thing is flat, and sometimes we have five-acre parcels with, you know, 10,000 feet of a building pad. So it's tough to analyze these sometimes when they, when we don't know some of the particulars. So that would be maybe some comments or columns that I would want to add to it, a little bit more detail.
Okay.
But I like the idea of comparison because But I like the idea of comparison because you kind of see what your neighborhood's like. Because we obviously have different setbacks on main roads here in the city. So I, I think this is a good analysis. So thank you for putting that together. All right, sorry about that. Anybody, any questions thus far?
No, just one point of clarification. I think someone brought up this morning though, the owner was asked to, you know, clear the ground and stake the whole property, right?
Correct. When the notice went out, I did request that as I had visited the property with my colleague Stephanie. Wasn't able to. It was about ten days prior.
Great question on, but it was also, did we ask him to stake where the driveway would go? Is that one comment?
I believe so and it was staked and perhaps the architect can answer those questions, but it's staked and maybe covered with weeds. We did notice that on our walkout.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, at this time, we'll open it up to the public. Please again, come up and state your name and address.
My name's Paul Reese for Chuck Wagon Road, Rolling Hills, nine oh two seven four. Good evening, honorable commissioners and also members of the staff and head of the city of Rolling Hills. I want to thank you for your time and your effort in preserving what makes this community so special. We really appreciate, I'm here with my wife Stephanie and, you know, we really appreciate just your review of the proposed home next door, your dedication to protecting the values of Rolling Hills. And also just as you think about these plans, considering the impact that it has on neighbors whenever possible. We bought our home four years ago and much of it was because of the privacy, the peace, the space and what the community offers. And part of what drew us to, to Rolling Hills also was just the distance between our house and our neighboring house at six Chug Wagon. And you could see on that, that chart just where that footprint is on the west side or western parcel of, of the property. And we'd hoped that that would continue and that kind of privacy would continue for a long period of time. We really appreciate the aspects of, of the design and the project and we still want to offer some suggestions on potential changes. We hope that just in the spirit of being good neighbors that, and, and residents of such a beautiful city, that really there can be some compromises so that the residents of, or new neighbors at six Chuck Wagon and ourselves can enjoy the community and enjoy our houses. And I think that's really important. There are three main areas that I want to address. One is just the size and placement of the house. The second is the location of the driveway. And the third is the corral. And first, just starting with the size and placement of the house. The proposed design shifts the home significantly to the east side of the lot. And it's much closer to our property and setback than, than we've had in the past. So we had a lot of open space that won't exist anymore. It's a large house. The lot definitely is challenging. So there are a lot of challenges just associated with, with the design. And since the plan though is for a new home, tear down the old home, it really just means that there's a lot of flexibility. It's like a blank palette. So it really, at sixty-nine hundred square feet, it's more than double the size of the original home. And then if you include the basement, it's almost triple the size of the original home. Second is just if you look at the homes in the surrounding area, like we'll say within three hundred square feet, it's much larger than the average size of those homes and almost double, just looking at the, at the data. So we suggest two potential ideas and options for you to consider when you're making your decision. And review the si, reviewing the size and location of the home. One is, could the house be moved closer to the west side of the lot? It seems like, just based on the graphic that I saw, that there could be somewhere in the range of anywhere from thirty to sixty feet of additional space. Let's say, so that's one option. A second option is really just, could the size of the house be reduced slightly? Could the size of lanai be reduced slightly so that it fits the contours of, of the lot? Which is, again, it's a challenging lot and the only way that you can get that size of the house is to expand it completely across that lot. Second, and really most important to us is that the driveway and the associated walls will extend into the setback nearest to our house. It's close to the easement and it's also adjacent or close to our master bedroom. And so there are four concerns that I have related to that. First, it's just a potential loss of privacy. And that is, the driveway is running right next to our master bedroom in our yard, so anybody standing there could look directly down into our yard. The second is just more noise, vehicles driving in and out. And I know that we could say, well, you know, cars aren't gonna, if you're, if it's on that side of the lot, you're not going to have a lot of traffic. But you're going to get more noise from vehicles driving in and out, cars idling, people socializing, kids playing. Someone could be servicing a car, someone could be washing a car, and it's all right there, right next to our lot. And we've lived in areas where lots are small, where, you know, there's more, you're side by side and the houses are close together. My thought with Rolling Hills is with every lot being around an acre or more, that there really is more space and more flexibility, especially on newer homes. Third, just exhaust fumes. The wind blows from west to east onto our property. And so it, the driveway basically, what we do is our house has a lot of open sliding doors. We keep them open. You get a great cross breeze. In our master bedroom, it's facing the driveway. And especially now, we leave that open when we go to sleep. That's where we're going to see some of that exhaust going right into our house. And then finally, it's just visually with headlights at night coming around, unless there's something that's blocking the cars, that's going to shine right into our house as well. So we have three suggested changes to, to the plan related to the driveway. First, I would say if there is a possibility of constructing some kind of either privacy wall or hedge or to plant landscaping, put trees up in that area to, to block much of that, then I'd say at least that would be a good solution or a good option to at least, you know, push back a little bit of that noise, a little, it's, it's not the perfect solution obviously, but at least it alleviates some of the concerns we have. The second is, is it possible to shift the driveway towards the west side of the property? If it's possible to move the house towards the west side, is it also possible to move the driveway? And then the third, could the garage be reduced in size? Maybe do a four car garage. If you had a four car garage instead of a six car garage, you save ten feet right there. And that could potentially change the, the driveway's impact. And then the third topic is the corral. The corral and stable, we have no concerns at all actually with the proposed location. It could, it, it looks like it was placed pretty thoughtfully and we appreciate that. So I'll conclude that we, we haven't had the opportunity over the four years that we've lived in the house to meet our neighbors. We know we've owned, that they own the house, but we've never met with them, so we've never had a chance to discuss any of this with them. This morning, we were able to talk to the architect and the engineer, which was great, at least having that opportunity. But in the last four years, it would have been nice just to have had the opportunity to, to discuss the plans directly and, and some of our concerns. We hope that the suggestions that I just made could work for both families. We want them to enjoy a brand new, really kind of amazing home from the looks of it. But we also want to continue enjoying the peace, privacy and comfort that we've had over the past four years and in, in the future. So again, thank you for your time, your service to the community, for the commissioners for being great neighbors. We appreciate that. To the staff as well and for considering our input. And we hope that you'll incorporate our suggestions when you make your decision. So thank you again.
Thank you. Well done. Long, but well done. Next time, we'll keep it under eight minutes. All right, no, I, I think you answered a lot of questions or brought up a lot of good points that we brought up today and so I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the planning commission staff. My name's Alan Rig. I am a consultant and I'm helping the Reeses regarding this project. The Reeses, of course, live next door at four Chuck Wagon. Not to repeat what you already know, but the finding, and, and your findings within your code are very consistent with Rancho PB, PB Estates. Harmonious scale, nature, trying to be one with the, the neighborhood, minimize impacts. This project, there's nothing harmonious about it and there's been nothing harmonious within the process to get here. I created a chart to try to put the size of the project into perspective with homes within three hundred feet. Within the chart I provided, you can see that the home, even without the basement, is more than twice the average size of homes in the neighborhood on similar sized lots. So it's a really big home. When you take a look at the basement, in addition to that, which is livable square footage, which is countable with the LA County Assessor, which is where I developed my chart from, it's almost three times as large. So it's, it's a big house. Size of a home isn't necessarily a bad thing. I've been doing this a long time. I've seen a three thousand square foot home create more impacts than a six thousand square foot home. Design is important. Twenty-three Crest Road East, huge home, no impacts because the design was done very, very well and respected the neighbors. As Paul mentioned, it was interesting when we were out there today is that the, this new very long home, two hundred and ten, I think it's two hundred and ten feet long, is, is not only pushed all the way up against the easement line with the driveway and walls on the Reese's side, but it's pushed thirty feet back from where the existing home is. So the existing home, it gets pushed thirty feet to the east for the new home in order to make room for the pergola and the livable areas outside. That doesn't seem very harmonious. It's great for the applicant, but it's horrible for, for my clients. In addition, the six car garage is very, very large. It pushes the mass of the home up against theirs. And when people are in the driveway, people are turning cars around. It's going to be significantly impactful to them. This project can, can be significantly better. If the, the car, if the garage was reduced to, I believe it was three cars and you kept the home, the west end where the existing home is, which would seem to be a reasonable starting point, you can gain sixty feet of additional distance from where the home currently sits. The east end, I'm sorry, the proposed home, the east end, proposed home to where it could be and you would have no impacts to the Reeses. So very simple change, not a lot of impacts, not even a big reduction in size if any. So they can have this huge home, but they need to work with the neighborhood. We do like the, the corral location. That is good. As I mentioned, it's been a little frustrating with the process, three things in particular. One is, as, as Paul mentioned, there was no outreach from the applicant to, to, to the Reeses at all. In other cities, that's actually required because it's really good for the process. And what can happen is if the applicant and the neighbors work together, they can walk in here with a project that's supported, approvable and it's, it's encouraged if not mandated in other cities. So that was frustrating. The second thing is, as was mentioned, we all showed up to the April meeting. There was no applicant. We had our good meeting. We all went home. We thought we were going to have a meeting, but we didn't. But the, the third thing is mentioned is the, the lack of weed control. And today, much of the mass of the home was hidden by the weeds. Many of the stakes in the ground dictating where, and showing where the driveway was, where the edge of the walls were, you couldn't even see them. And so that really defeats a lot of the purpose. Why spend all the time and money to put up this, this silhouette when it's masked by the, by the weeds? So what we'd, we'd ask is, it's, it's a huge project. Does, does the size of a project necessarily mean it's a bad project? No. But when it creates impacts that are so severe to the neighbors and with the design is, I mean, even with the thirty foot pushback to have a pergola, but pushes it thirty feet onto the Reeses, there's things that could be done that could both work very well for the applicant and they can get their large home. They could get their views, but they don't have to destroy the privacy and the character of the home for the Reeses. So I would encourage you to direct the applicant, take another look at this, look at some modifications and hopefully we can come back at the next meeting with a project that we could support and is good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Stephanie Reese for Chuck Wagon. Thank you so much. I appreciate you hearing us. I just want to give you a little bit of background about myself. I was born and raised in Palos Verdes. My parents moved here in nineteen sixty-five. I'm a local product of all of these schools here. I have plenty of friends that live back here. And, you know, the reason why we love our house is because of the, the atmosphere of the neighborhood, but also the privacy. And when I think about me not being able to walk outside in my balcony to my backyard and the loss of privacy, it gives me a great deal of distress. And I have lived next door to the people for four years and never got, never met the people. And I would have gladly like been able to sit down with somebody and just kind of talk about this. And it's just, it's, it's the privacy issue and that's why we moved to Rolling Hills and our children are older. And we, our home is, everyone gathers there. And so I just want you all to understand how much, you know, our home and the privacy in Rolling Hills means to me and my family. And I hope, I hope that you guys will take under, you know, consideration some of these things. Because right now, I feel a little hopeless because I feel like my privacy is going to be lost. And also, I'm just going to ask one quick question. Would you be able to pull that slide up one last time? How close it was to my house? And I know you came over this morning, but I don't think that the owner of the new house has ever been over there of where, of the house. But I mean, like, that is my balcony. That is my backyard. No, because I can't see out of my left eye right now. So I just want them to understand, maybe if you came and took a look at our house and see, you know, exactly how far over that is coming to our property and seeing how much privacy we would lose. And I appreciate you coming over, but I just don't know if they realize that. So I appreciate you listening to me. Sorry if I'm a bit emotional, but this is really close to my heart here because that's why I moved to Rolling Hills. So thank you so much for listening to me. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next?
I have a question. No, please go.
You can close the public hearing and move forward to.
Now, thirty-one East Feld, Rolling Hills, nine zero two seven four. Thank you, Commission, for all the time you've put into this. So as my background, I live down further on East Feld, but I have a view of this property. So I'm thrilled that they want to do something with it because the driveway alone has been an eyesore for so many years. You can't really see the house so much from where I am, but I see the driveway. And when I swim, I, that's my view from my pool, so, and my patio. And the first meeting you guys came to my, I'm sorry, you guys, you, the commission, the group came to my house to see that, so I could make a point about it. But I'm in my family house. We've been here for fifty years, so I've watched houses come into my neighborhood. So directly across the canyon from me and just below to the left in the canyon to me, new houses were built and they are on the larger size. But that's one of my biggest concerns is that now we're putting in a really big house that is so much bigger than any of the other houses that are in our immediate area. Like up on Crest, there's other houses that are really big, but in our neighborhood, they tend to be a little bit smaller. And I went through a similar situation with my next door neighbor with the driveway. The person, the people that owned the house before me put a driveway in that was three feet onto my property without my permission. feet onto my property without my permission, but because it's so small, Stephanie knows, there's nothing I can really do about it. But when those people live there, they, you thought that, oh, it was just the parents that were there. Well, all their kids would show up with their pickup trucks, and I heard all the noise, and it's just as close as what Stephanie and Paul are talking about, their property. And at the time, my mother was alive, and it was right next to her bedroom and her bathroom, and, you know, we get the lights, and like, even the new owner of the house, he has an older car, like, a vintage car, and on Sundays, his day off, he's always revving it before he goes out to take a drive. And I hear it with my, you know, if I have a window open or not, I hear him revving his car to do it. So I really understand what they're talking about, about it being disruptive. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, so I just wanted to go on record to reiterate some of their concerns and then add some mine, but the other thing was, I'm a little also concerned, oh, first of all, when you, when you refer to garage, in the future, if maybe you could consider referring it to garages, because it's not one- or two-car, which is a normal-sized garage, it's six-car garage, and that's really big. I don't know anybody that has that big of garage in my neighborhood. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd like to know if any other houses in my area have garages that big. And again, I want to say that, you know, this, as Brad has always brought up, this is a buildable lot. Nobody's telling, saying to them that they shouldn't build, but when you start expanding so big, and then still even adding a basement, which adds even more, I'm a little concerned about the disruption of the soil, and a little bit of what number 23 Crest went through with people down below being concerned about the runoff. And they went way over and above trying to, you know, tell the neighbors that were down below them that the water issue would not hopefully be an issue, which is at the area where we've had turnoffs, you know? We've had landslide area. So I'm a little concerned now with this big property moving soil and what they're, like, when they do their landscaping, what their water usage is going to be and what the runoff is going to be. And nobody, I don't think, they've done a soil thing, or what, I don't know what that's called, that you check for the water runoff. So I'd like to know if that's feasible. And, you know, in general, I mean, a bigger house means better property value for my house, but just not quite so big. So I'm hoping that you guys will consider, excuse me, guys again, I hope the commission will consider reviewing the size and maybe moving it over. And, you know, the lower lot where the corral and stuff like that is, that seems okay, but I'm a little concerned when you put a pool towards the front. I think the pool was at the front of the property? Yeah. So I know that the driveway is going to be a switchback and stuff, but the pool is going to be at the front of the property. So also, when you're up higher, you hear everything. Like, I can hear people up above me from where I live and stuff. So I'm just hoping that you'll take some of these things into consideration. So let me see if I covered most of my notes. Thank you. Anyway, especially about the, what it will mean to be moving that much soil to make the driveway feasible and their pads feasible, and then in addition to what number four is going through, what it would be for water runoff and so forth, so. And can I bring up one other thing just off this for a second, or no?
No, we have to stick to the subject here. Yeah.
Okay, because I have something on your minutes that's wrong.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Jeff Browning, and I'm at 1570 West Ninth Street in San Pedro. That's my home, and I'm working with SAA on 6083 Bristol Parkway in Culver City. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to you, and thank you for meeting me this morning. I want to apologize for not making the last, the last meeting last month. I assure you, it was grave circumstances, and I wouldn't be disrespectful to miss that meeting intentionally. So some of the things that have been brought up here today, I appreciate them speaking first. We did discuss some things while we were out there. So if you look at this lot, it's got two pads, basically. We saw that when we were out there. We've got this higher, long pad with the steep driveway, and the house is jammed to the right there, we'll just say. That's the best view on the lot. It is. There shouldn't be a house there. That's where you want to hang out, right there. So to the left of the house there, I've got a big, flat pad section, and I can appreciate that you were enjoying the distance there, but my clients are entitled to build the home that they want in that area, provided that I respect the laws in the city, which I was thinking that if we pushed the house back, then it would be out of the way of this front, you know, the windows that face the front. But going over there today, I saw a six-foot-high hedge there that you can see. And one of the things that's unfortunate, if I may get up here?
Sure. Oh, okay. Try to use, so we could hear you in the mic.
So the property line, haven't used one of these before. Oh, the old button. So this property line actually goes straight. So I regret that they are inside the setback on their own side. This is a condition that's, you know, an unusual condition that's really irrelevant. But I was trying to keep everything back. So with that same thought in mind, would it be better to have the pool here and keep the garage over here? I don't think so. I don't think it'd be better to have the corral over here, which maybe this was built for, maybe not. I think it's better to have the corral away. So with those two things in mind, we have the, we're keeping this entrance, and I'm trying to use this pad to come up this way. Because of the length of the driveway, I need to provide a hammerhead turnaround for fire up there, which is pretty big. When I first presented this next door to the Homes Association, they asked that I shift the house over this direction, so that I can provide space here outside of the easement for landscaping and hedges and that sort of thing. So whether we talked to the neighbor or not, I was thinking of them, and we did move the house. And we, I had our civil engineer regrade this and make sure it all was going to pass code. I'm also concerned about the soils conditions here, because this portion of the lot is the thing that triggered the variance. This portion is over two to one. Our intention is to lower this pad a little bit and fill this area in, so that it is two to one and meets the code. I'm also so concerned about this project that I already have the grader on who's going to do this. My trues of Drew's Construction has been advising us the entire time on how to do this safely for everybody. I imagine four years ago was also very quiet here, because that was during the pandemic, and it's a little unfair to use that as a starting point, but that's okay. You win. So the disturbance of the area is also a little bit of a misnomer. We are disturbing an additional 5% thereabouts. We started with a lot that is over 70% disturbed. All of this is not natural, and we've got, this pad was not natural. So it slopes down, I'm starting to love this pointer, actually. It's starting to slope this way, and probably the whole thing did this. So we calculated that we're already over 70%. Shifting this portion and moving this over helps stabilize this soil. I'm also concerned about runoff, which was brought up. I am already working with a landscape architect, and he's in the back here joining me today in case there was any concerns about that. So with those things in mind, the exhaust, I don't know about that. A hedge was requested, we'd be more than happy to put in the hedge, that's intended to put in that hedge. Shift the driveway over. It's not in this side setback right now. Like I said, I've got space there. Moving the house in this direction minimizes the open space that I'm, that I want to get right here. Privacy, I, it was pointed out in, in your presentation about not having windows on that side, and that's something that I intentionally did. So the house has the six-car garage here, but that puts the living space 85 feet from this side property line. 85 feet's a pretty good setback. I'm happy to, is there open discussion? Okay.
No.
The size of the house, I, this is a dream house for my client. I think they, if I'm respecting the wishes that, you know, what they would like, what they've dreamed of, this is the size house that they want. Again, I mentioned the water runoff. Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much it. So basically, the driveway, we agree, it's too steep. I'm flipping it around this way, filling in this slope that's over two to one. The easiest thing for me to do to not get in the variance is to move that garage, I mean, I apologize, to move the stable and the corral set aside area. Everybody's in favor of it, so just go with it. And that's over in this area off to this slope right, right here. So if there are any questions, and if my engineer and landscape architect can be of any further help, we're all here.
I have a few questions. Excuse me. Review the side yard setback, excuse me, where the garage starts. So how many feet from the, go over what the setback is, the easement, the setback, and where the garage starts, just so the public knows exactly if you are encroaching or not encroaching.
Do we have a plan up? I'm not encroaching, and I've got an additional space for, that was a good one. I should have taken you up on that water. So I have, this is the hammerhead space right here, the turnaround. This is, this line is the setback line, this one. This is the additional space. This, I don't believe this is the latest one, but I put an additional three feet of space right here. And, and the hope is to, the intention is to put a big hedge there and block any, you know, just give some additional privacy.
In, in our packets, the driveway extends all the way to the easement. Encroaching is setback, which is not against the rules. But the driveway goes to the easement, which is, should be 10 feet, and then it's encroaching roughly 10 feet in the side yard setback, which is, should be 20 feet.
That's fair. So, so that space should be right here outside of the easement. That's what Ms. Bishop requested that we do.
And how many feet from the garage itself, that wall there, to the property line?
I'd have to consult the plans.
Twenty plus. It's within the side yard setback.
Thank you for that.
At least a few feet.
Okay.
22?
It's 22 or 23, just based on...
Okay. Thank you. All right. More questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for this. And thanks for this.
Hey, any more?
I'm Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering, 25834 Narbonne Avenue in Lomita. I'm the project civil engineer on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for being here. I just want to reiterate, just because there were some questions about grading and stability of the lot, we are not the project soils engineers. As this commission and staff know, the project, like every project in Rolling Hills, that involves a grading permit, is going to have a soils report and a geology report. I can confirm some of Jeff's observations that there are existing overly steepened conditions that, among other things, are triggering the variance for the project, and that so those slopes exceeding code, being put to code maximum, in my opinion, will improve the stability of the lot. In addition to that, like many projects that we discussed together here, by virtue of putting the basement in, as well as the pad lowering that Jeff alluded to, you know, you're getting closer to bedrock, and so the stability of the project, I think, is going to be...
Excuse me, two secs. Guys in the audience, please be quiet. We can hear you up here. Please be quiet. Thanks.
In terms of project runoff, by virtue of the fact that it's a developed lot, we haven't done hydrology yet, but the hydrology, like many projects on developed lots in Rolling Hills, will be increasing fractionally as the county requires, and as Catherine Bishop observed, you know, we're putting in a biofiltration unit. That biofiltration does, in this plan, encroach in the easement. We will move it out of the easement, so that it no longer encroaches, trying to pick up as much of that runoff as we practically could. I think that's all I got. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have from an engineering standpoint.
I actually have one. Sorry, I'm not a builder. How does, you said that building a basement increases the stability? How does that work? Sorry?
So a basement is, almost everywhere in Rolling Hills, the Palos Verdes is a hill because it has, it's a bedrock outcropping, covered in some places with a very thin layer of soil, relatively speaking, and other places, a very thick layer of soil. Rolling Hills, in the vast majority of cases, it's a fairly thin layer of soil. And so, but when lots are developed, a lot of times, they're developed by cutting on the uphill side and filling on the downhill side to create a level pad. And so particularly in those downhill cases, you may have, after that grading is done, you may have eight, 10, 15 more vertical feet from the surface of the pad down to bedrock. So, and in current codes, when you develop a house, most of the time, the soils engineer and the geologist would recommend that the foundations all bear into bedrock. Well, if you, in lieu of doing deepened foundations that might have sidelong forces on them, if you build a basement underneath the home, by virtue of the fact that you've gone down 10 feet, 12 feet, removed relatively heavy soil with relatively lightweight open sp, you know, airspace, and then you're more proximate to the bedrock, which is more competent bearing material, it improves the stability of the lot relative to how it was before.
Okay, thank you for that.
Great question, and we've gone through this before, just to verify, we've kind of, it makes logical sense, whatever he's, what he's saying about the basement relative stability, and we've looked into that, had a million conversations, and that's why the basements don't usually bother us, a square footage, whatever. In fact, we have some homes that are 8,000 feet up and 8,000 feet down. And so what happens is that whole footing is stable in the bedrock. So to his point, it's actually an advantage and a disadvantage, which is good for the public here, too, because that basement makes it more stable on that hillside. Anybody above you, so to speak, it's nice that they have a basement versus just a normal, or a caissons or any kind of foundation going to bedrock. So, thanks. Anything else? You good? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one more question, Dan. So the driveway to the right there, that existing slope, do you know what that is?
On the driveway itself, or on the...
The current driveway. Is there an issue at the top being too steep?
Yes, the existing driveway is on the order of 23%, which exceeds fire department maximums. It's also too narrow. So, yeah, so the existing driveway is something like 23 feet. So, so that's the logic, it's one of the logics behind the switchbacking driveway that you see on the proposed plan, is that it just gives us the running length to reduce the longitudinal grade on the driveway, get us down below to something that the fire department can...
You're not changing the entrance?
Not changing the entrance.
So the association, that's been blessed, so to speak?
Same location, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Are you allowed to come back or no?
If you would like to come back, please do. Yes?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Please, hang on, just, come up to the top?
Sarah hasn't spoken. She can go.
Okay, come on up, give your name and your address, and come up to the... Yes, that's the procedure. We have to do the procedure, so we're recording everything. Okay. Anybody else? Okay.
I just wanted to clarify something. You go ahead first.
Okay, we're going to close the public comment unless someone wants to come up, say their name. Okay, we're, we're going to close the public comment unless someone wants to come up, say their name.
Stephanie, and I can't remember, I just need to think for a second. So first of all, we moved here sort of after the pandemic, so that comment, whoa. Just, just, yeah. And I realize that, um, we haven't had anybody next to us. I a hundred percent realize that, and I am taking that into consideration. It's not about having somebody next to us. What I want to clarify and, and it's kind of confusing to me is, is it going to be, with all the land talk, is it going to be then higher, um, the garage? Or is it going to go down lower?
Real quick, we verified that. The land itself is lower. So actually, the good news is, from your standpoint, is that, that pad, the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, go, leading up to the garage is lower than what it is.
But the building will be as tall.
Those flags are accurate in terms of that height.
Height.
So if it showed eight feet now, it may be 10 feet.
Okay.
From the ground, but it's not going to change the overall height.
So on the driveway?
The driveway will be less.
Where the garage is?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the whole pad, from what I understand.
Until those plants grow and everything else, my view, my privacy will still be, and, uh, taken away from me. As in a sense, until, unless they put in plants that are already grown, correct?
It depends on what's planted and that, and that's association, and we'll talk about that.
That could take years.
Second thing, it depends on what they plant and how that's affected.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
But again, you have your own privacy, your own hedge currently, okay? That's supposed to help you from that standpoint. It's ni- nice that you have that in, just in general. Versus not.
No, I understand that, but I think, okay, I would li-, okay, I'm gonna.
I'm going to say something now, right? Thank you.
Hey, hey, please come up, sit down, give your name and your address, please.
I'm Sarah Noel. I live right there, Eight Hakamore, and we've been living there more than 20 years. And I always welcome my neighbor. I never have any complaint. I'm so happy they're all different, whatever they are, who they're, they are. I never have any problem. I'm just so sad to hear that we're not welcoming our new neighbor.
Hold on, hold on.
We're not, it just hurts my heart.
Let's stick to our subject here.
So, okay, I was there today.
Hold on one second, please, if you would. Your comments are to be directed at the commission. Their, their information you're sharing with us, this is not a debate between you and.
Oh, I'm sorry if I went that direction. That wasn't, uh, my intention, because to, this morning I had a conversation with them and they said, I asked them, I don't know these people. I know them from the school, because our kids goes to the same school. So, but they're welcome, I want to welcome that.
We want to hear your comments relative to the project.
So when I talk, today I ask, is there any violation, code violation, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, so they says, we've been living there and we need our privacy. So we went to their backyard. So we look at them, yes, they need their privacy from their driveway, which is their right. If I go to the, that pool with my bikinis, if somebody goes over, looks, they're going to see it. But it's fixable. Like you put the hedge, whatever I have there, it's fixable, it's gone. So they said, the noise from the car garage. So they're willing to, they says, okay, we do the soundproof, we were agreed to that this morning. So right now I'm hearing, I mean, I don't know these people, but it's just so sad though. If I, like tomorrow, if decide to do some construction, maybe I will, because why not? I have the land. Is this gonna, what's gonna happen to me? It makes me sad though.
No, I think this is a process, okay? What we do is we're going through procedures to get to the end result. This is part of the process where everybody gets to give this, or their opinion on particularly the subject project right in front of us, as it relates to the neighbors, the view, et cetera. Our job is to look at the massing, look at the project, make sure it fits within our guidelines. That's our job, okay? This goes from here, it goes to city council and it goes to the association, okay? So there's other bodies that will look at this. That's part of our procedure here.
I know association very well. I'm a landscape architect, landscape contractor, and I do the landscape. And I'm the, it's the girl for those kind of things. So I've been to the many, many house. I seen many, many violations.
Listen, but please, if, if there's any comments on this, because we have to keep moving.
I do have any other comments, like, because now I'm worried too, because she said if there's a water run. So I'm thinking, water run, how? Like, what are we talking about?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
Like that's gonna be.
Okay, please. Okay. No, no, hang on a second.
Yeah, that's it. So I want to know more.
That's what the engineer commented to. Anything of that nature is handled through all the engineering process. That will be handled, like the landscape, all of that drainage, all rain runoff, all of that will be a s- part of this process. Right now, we're at the beginning stages of just the massing. All those details, all the soils engineering, all of those things will be done later. Okay?
So that's what I was wondering, like, what are we talking about there? When we talking about like?
We're not there yet. We're not even there yet. That's not, that's not what, under our purview, we don't go there today.
So that's why I'm so ma-, so confused about so much things here, like, I just wanted to hear and know what's going on around me as a neighbor, but I'm just confused. That's, you know, that's what it is.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay.
You know, 31 Eastfield, so to address some of these things that came up, especially from Sarah, none of us are not wanting to welcome our neighbor. We just had the new neighbors move in.
Let's try to be very specific to the project. So if there's a project, not personalities here, feelings, that's not what we're here to do.
Well, that's why I don't understand why she's bringing that up, because we're always welcoming to neighbors.
Okay.
I'm part of the welcoming group. So it's really good to hear from the engineer that the basement will secure the land better. I'm talking more down the road when they do their landscaping, and I know that goes to landscaping committee, but just to consider what water runoff will be in the future on the property.
That's all in the future, that will be addressed.
Okay.
But one of the other things I wanted to say was, you know, the architect coming in here and saying that the, that the.
Property owners are entitled to build what they want, that's understandable. We all want our dream home, we're all living in our dream homes. So nobody's saying that they can't have a dream home. It's just, you know, within certain parameters. This is a little bit of, in my opinion, overkill, and especially with such big garages. And so I would like to know the next time, if it comes to this commi-, this commission, what's, what's the largest sized garages in the area? We've already gone through what the largest houses are, but what are the largest garages?
I think you could, we could probably ask staff that question, just initial comment, the advantage, the advan- Some people have car barns, okay? And they, a lot more than this, okay? The advantage of a garage, a larger garage, particularly when you have a lot of kids like we did, is they get to park in a garage and they're not on the driveway. It's actually an advantage, in my opinion, to have a garage, as long as it fits in the parameter of the, of the house and, and how it sits.
Well, I understand.
The overall square footage is taken into consideration there. So if they choose to d- develop that, the garage and have a three-car garage versus a six, versus a six versus a 7,000-foot home or an 8,000-foot home, that is within the guidelines of them doing that. Their idea of, of, of a dream home is different than yours, okay? So that's all we're doing. All we're doing today is setting parameters. It's not the end results, not the end that you could make comments to it.
You're not making a decision this evening, obviously.
Well, we'll see, we're not there yet.
Well, having such a large house and then adding on the six garages, you know, maybe the house can be smaller so they can have the bigger garages and stuff. But another comment I want to make is that I would imagine that the property owner knew that we were coming for a site review today. And when Alan brought up about how you couldn't see the stakes and the walls and so, some of the property, because it was so overgrown. So in the next time, if there's another site review, it would be nice if they would clear so people can see what they're supposed to be looking at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing, so thank you very much. All right. Commissioners, who wants to start?
I'll start.
Okay.
With the garages that people seem to have issues with, I completely agree with you. I would rather have, if, I'm assuming the homeowner has multiple cars. I would much rather have them housed in a garage than all over the driveway, where you are going to be outside talking and getting in your cars and it's, there's going to be, in my opinion, a lot more noise going on if those cars are all parked out in a driveway rather than housed in a garage. And I'd rather, if I have to look, I'd rather see a building than a bunch of cars out in front. So that's, that's all I have to say about that. Nope, that's it, that's good.
I think that a lot of the angst seems to stem from neighbor engagement. And, I mean, that's not under our purview, but perhaps, um, is there a way that we can get the owner to engage more? I don't know, you know, like, it seems like a lot of the.
No, it's a good question, but I think we have to watch out that sometimes we don't want to put the owner under, sometimes they're just not comfortable. And it's not really, I agree, it's always nice, and when I've done it, I've gone next door, because I try to see if I can negotiate with them first.
Exactly, right.
But you know what? That's not everybody. And so I can't, I, I don't disagree, it's a, it's a good common sense way of approaching how you'd go about a development. But that's also the architect and his job, and that's why he's there today and, and trying to describe and, and answer those questions, because the owner typically doesn't know all those rules.
Right.
And, and that's his job.
Okay, and then there was this question about screening. And, um, I think one of the neighbors said that in the meantime, while waiting for the hedge to grow, she would be exposed to all this light. I think hedges grow pretty quickly. I have a ficus, it grew in three years, more than 10 feet. So I feel like that's a solvable solution. I think the design is actually really clever, given the limitations of the lot. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay.
So the, the first thing, um, I want to say is that there, there's, there's no right to privacy, there's no right to building your dream home. I, I understand both sides of it. We all expect privacy and we all expect to come to Rolling Hills and build a dream home if, if we're building and not, uh, buying our dream home. That being said, what we're here to look at is the, the three variances in particular and, you know, look at the merits of the requests, et cetera. I'm pretty sure everybody felt comfortable with the, the barn set aside, stable location, et cetera. I am as well. There's one comment about it being close to the, the trail down there, but it's kind of where you want your barn is, close to the trails, uh, being a horseman myself. So I'm okay with that, and that's, that's one of the three. The, the fill slopes being graded in two to one, and there's reference inside the staff report as well to when you exceed 40% of disturbance, those fill slopes not exceeding three to one. And, and that was something else that I kind of looked at, and I wasn't aware of that previously, but, um, standing up on the, the shelf up top, and, and, and I'll get to disturbance in a second, but, um, the lot was clearly already cut for two building pads. And I'd be shocked if that was even a, a one-to-one slope currently. But because of the weeds and everything else, couldn't really see, couldn't really tell. The first time we were there, it was a little bit clearer. And so I, I would like to, to actually see that lot with the driveway, stake, the flags, et cetera, and understand more, um, because again, it looked like, oh, not quite vertical, but it was a, a very steep drop down. The final thing is the, the site disturbance. And, uh, it's a fair point that the applicant makes that the additional disturbance is only roughly 5%, I think it was, is going from like 73% to 78% or 79% maybe. And, and that's, that's a good point, it's a valid point. But we're forgetting the fact that this lot has already been disturbed a significant amount. And it was disturbed presumably for the original, um, uh, home that was built. And then maybe, uh, afterwards for a, a future site down below for the barn or something else. And that, that's the biggest issue I have, is that we've got, you know, massive disturbance, well over the 40%, you know, as part of our, um, guidelines. And, and there's additional disturbance required to, to build this house. The, the massing and the, and the placement and stuff, I, I would, to your point, have loved to have the, the applicants and the neighbors kind of get together and, and talk about that and, and discuss ways of doing this. I think, um, we certainly can't im- impose or instruct or demand. People, be good neighbors, work with their neighbors. But at the end of the day, that makes it a lot easier for us to do our job when the neighbors have worked through some of the more difficult, challenging situations and, and found mutually beneficial resolution to it. So that again, I'm, I'm personally disappointed that there, there wasn't discussions and trying to alleviate some of the friction prior to, uh, the second meeting. I, I think it was pretty apparent at the first meeting, uh, that we had that there were concerns. So I was hoping to, to see some of that, um, you know, worked through. But again, just something I'd like to see, it's not something that we can impose on. So I do think that there's, you know, certainly there's a, a home to be built, a, hopefully a dream home to be built on that property. I think the massing, the location of it, um, I saw in here the, I don't know if this is right, but the, the total attached covered porches at 9,500 square feet, which I assume, you know, a chunk of that is going to be the pergola, but it seemed like a really big number. I don't know if it's, if it's accurate or not, but, um, if there's, if there's a way to, um, make some adjustments to the home, um, you know, shifting, I, I, I do understand the, the headlights in the driveway, the people, the noise. I also appreciate that, you know, rather my neighbors' cars be in the garage than out the driveway. But that being said, I, I would like to, I'd like to see the property and, and understand better kind of the driveway and, and how that, that slope is, is really going to work. Just looking at the, the plans, I don't think the, the grading plan wasn't super specific, but the, the topographical plan and then in some of the, the slice views on the side, it, it looked like the current grade was maybe more generous than, than it really is. So I'd like to just see that better myself and, and understand this. And I'm hoping that the, the neighbors and the applicant can, um, maybe discuss things that, that would make the project more, you know, pleasing and, and certainly harmonious. As it stands today, I, I have a hard time seeing the project as harmonious with, with that, that section of Rolling Hills.
Thank you. Great comments. I apologize, I wasn't there at the first meeting. I think that would have been enlightening, I think, um, as proved today, when the architect, uh, was there today to describe it, it did have clarity. We all got to ask a lot of questions, I think that was good. We've addressed, I think, particularly Commissioner Credius did a good job of addressing a couple of the issues. Obviously, we are here to listen to you relative to, uh, and when you hear subject words of privacy, those things are buzzwords, that, that's our job, is to make you guys feel comfortable. So part of our job though, um, and to address those three variances really quickly. I think we can get past those. Commissioner Credius did a good job of addressing those in terms of what we're doing. I still have a question on the driveway. I agree that I think I'd like to see the driveway marked clearly. I'd like to see, uh, just an idea with the flags of a slope of the driveway, just to verify what we're seeing. I think it would also help with the neighbors just to see in terms of, okay, are you really going to have lights shining if you're three feet off the ground for a headlight? Just a little bit of common sense there, uh, and, and see that. The house, so that everybody knows, it fits in that lot. They, they have the right, in my opinion, to build that. It has nothing to do with how big or how small the property is. They are inside of their setbacks and they have the proper, correct, open area. It's too bad that the whole thing has been so disturbed, the whole entire lot, so, such a percentage. I'd love to see it less. My suggestion, to get down to it, rather than take a vote today, is that we kind of appease us and the neighborhood. And I think it would come across best if you could, one, clear the lot, two, stake the driveway, three, get an idea of that, uh, uh, get an idea of the, uh, lanai myself, if that's not an issue, it doesn't seem like it, but if that's something that could be reduced, because I think the limit was, what, 250 and it's 650? Is that correct? Eight hundred? Oh, oh, okay. So, but I thought that the lanai was larger or. Oh, oh, okay, so, but I thought that the Lenai was larger, or?
Greater than 200.
Pardon me?
Greater than 200 requires variance for detached structures.
Okay, okay.
And so.
Right, right, so, thank you, but my suggestion is, go back, kind of look at the plans a little bit, and, and make some concessions of your mind, you don't have to, you could come back and say, we've looked at it, and this is what we want to do, and, and that's a fair way, if you want to go back and do that. I think you're hearing all of the comments and of your neighbors, and I think everybody's made the point that everybody wants to get along tomorrow also, so when you're living there, and we want you to move in and enjoy that beautiful home. So, the next question is, how to appease everybody? Some of the comments were reasonable, and some were not, and we pointed out, some of the things are, are reasonable to me and other people on the commission here, so that's my suggestion, I don't know where we're going to take it from a proposal standpoint.
So, typically, we will, we'll give the applicant the opportunity to make a decision as to whether they'd like us to, to hold a vote, or if they'd like to work on the proposal a little bit further with staff and any other inputs that you'd like to have, and we can move it to the next meeting.
So, we'd like to, yeah, please, come up, yes.
While, while we were next door at what I believe is four chuck wagon, I thought we came up with a solution, and that's what Sarah was referring to. We discussed putting a, a bigger hedge, you know, some kind of privacy, landscape screening, and we also discussed.
You're going in the right direction, I think what's happening with the suggestion is, going back.
Decide now or later.
Everybody, really quickly, what we'd like to do is, the suggestion is, bring that up, and bring a couple of the other comments up, if there's a way to squeeze that garage, a stall, maybe consider that, if it's not, and you want to keep it there, then keep it there. I think what we're trying to do is, go back, relook at it, we, I personally, I want to see that driveway, I just didn't understand it, it should have been marked clearer, it wasn't, I think it needs to be flagged.
Yeah.
That's personally, okay? And, and I think it'd be a good idea, and let's weed whack it, so that it's a little bit more easy to get around, it just looks, it's like a little bit of a presentation, this isn't formal that way, it's just, what we're trying to do is also, and then staff, us separately, can also address some of these concerns and make sure that they are being realistic, so the next time that we all meet, they have an idea of what's reasonable and what's not reasonable.
Point taken, it would be my pleasure to clear that lot, the request came in a little bit late, the owner was out of town, just some, you know, logistics, with a little more time.
Are you okay if we continue this in the next meeting?
Yes, I was about to get there.
Perfect, thank you, okay, so that's exactly, that's exactly how we do it, it's not open to the public, it's not open to the public.
He was talking to the wrong person, that's all I'm gonna say.
It's okay, you could bring it up afterwards, okay, so, okay, so.
How is that possible, Sarah? I was an unknown person, I was talking to you, I was talking to you.
Please, 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 please.
No, because she was talking to me, how am I wrong person?
Thank you. Okay, so we've, we've made, please, we've had, applicant has agreed to step back, take a look at it, thank you very much, think that's an appropriate move right now.
Recommendation, Commissioner, would you have a motion to continue to the next meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue item, or zoning case two, four, desk zero, four, three.
Please, please, please.
To the next meeting.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
If you want.
Okay.
It's up to you.
All in favor? All right, we're done, okay, good.
Meeting's not over. Please.
Please continue. If we could do this next time. All right.
You guys, we're still in session, you guys can go outside.
Please, outside.
Outside.
Do we have any old business to bring up? Okay, you do new business? Thank you. Thank you. Any new business?
Ms. Sarah. Ms. Sarah, I'm so sorry, Ms. Sarah, I'm so sorry, we're still trying to attend the meeting, I'm so sorry.
Can we please step outside?
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, take it outside. Thank you, Vice Chair, to answer your question, we don't have any items from staff, is that what you asked?
Sorry, real quick, any scheduled field trips next time?
Potentially, go ahead if you want it, Stephanie.
Vice Chair, we don't have any scheduled at this time, we'll, but we should have one.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll see if maybe this item can come back by then, we can work with the applicant and help them address these questions and concerns.
Any items from staff?
No.
Okay. I need some planning commission.
Nope.
We're in the middle of session, you gotta, let's stick to protocol here, okay?
Okay.
We are adjourned, thank you very much. Correct it.
Well, it'll be, it'll be noticed.
Yes, we know.
It'll be noticed.
Happens when Brad goes out of town? No, thank you. Do we need a quarter of arms next time?